Good evening, everyone. I am calling to order the Blue Lake City Council meeting of Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. It is 6:30 PM. This is our regular meeting, also being held via Zoom per government code. Our first item of business is our pledge of allegiance. So please join me in the quiet seat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, and we are now on establishing a form of the council. If you do that for us, our secretary this evening is Emily Woods.
I can go ahead and do it.
Okay.
She's gonna, just because we're just practicing.
Okay, very good. Normally you would do that.
Yeah. Mayor Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Hogan. Member McCree.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Also member Gordy is absent.
Okay, so we have a forum of the council. Item two is approval of the agenda. First from the council, is there anything you would like to move around, change, adjust in any way? Okay, and then out to public, is there anyone in the public that would like to have anything moved around for any reason or other? Seeing none, back to council for a vote on approval of the agenda.
Oh, approval of the agenda as it's seconded.
Motion by Chris Curran, seconded by Ben McCree to approve the agenda as it is. Any further discussion from council? Any further discussion for public? Back to council for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item three, public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relative to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake, and is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure the individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the right to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Do we have any public comment this evening? Glenn, your hand is up?
Yes, yes, it is. Thank you.
Glenn?
Can you hear me?
Okay, you're, you're going in and out a little bit.
Okay, I'll lean closer. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, you're, you're.
Okay.
It seems to be better now.
Okay, yeah, I, I just wanted to comment about the trail because I walk the trail regularly. And I've been noticing that it's getting to be spring and it's getting greener and getting really beautiful. And the city staff has been filling in the puddle, puddles. So it's been really helpful and made it much more pleasant to walk. So I just wanted to thank Mandy and Hub of Works and Glenn for the work that the crew is doing. It's just making it really even better. And I'm noticing a lot of people, I have friends from Arcata and people from McKinleyville. So I think a lot of people are enjoying it. And I wanted to thank the city staff for making it better. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Always nice to have something positive to start our meetings with. Thank you.
I saw you there Sunday.
Yes.
Hadley.
On your bikes.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any other public comment at this time on a non-agenda item? Okay.
And we did receive two items. One was a comment from Lisa Hoover. And then the other was a letter from RCA, from Stephen Coleman. He's asking for a letter of support for an action that RCA is undergoing. And he knew that he didn't get it, but I said we could at least put it as a comment. Side, I feel like it's kind of within the purview of staff with some of the stuff that we're already supporting with RCA. So it might be okay to have staff write a letter of support for their request. And I can go and read Lisa Hoover's. Actually, I'll pass it to you guys. That's the letter from RCA. I want to, I'm going to read Lisa Hoover's. For tomorrow's agenda, I would like to submit the following. I request that the city schedule community forums in the near future regarding the Powers Creek development, the basis for the needs, the basis and source for the elements, ideas included, including in the proposal request for proposed story lines ability analysis. These forums would allow for a DPD and a new forums to receive information from community members submitted by Lisa Hoover.
Also, we're going to offer that. And we'll submit these as public comments. So do you think we need to make this ourself, or is there need to do it quickly?
They do, they are up against a bit of a timeline. So it's on the agenda. So if something that you can consider, or if you felt that it was already within the purview of what staff has been directed to support with these initiatives, we can move it forward that way, or we can bring it back. I believe we'll be requesting a earlier meeting in February because we have some additional items that need to come before council. And we could probably bring it, possibly bring it back then as well.
And so some of ours are representative, right, for RCA?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So do you have any background, or is this something you go over on, or you have any more info about this rural, rural regional energy network?
Yeah. Pretty much just be able to apply for like larger just larger projects collectively instead of small communities going after large project.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems like that's why we're in the JPA and why RCA.
Right. That's why I thought you might think, after you read it, it might be something that we've already, you know, they're already moving in that direction. And we've made that commitment and the council especially switching over, you know, to 100% renewables for the city. You made a pretty strong commitment to moving these initiatives forward and supporting these activities. So it didn't feel too outside of what you've already approved to be able to support this.
All right.
So I feel like it could be a directive to staff versus an action.
Right, we can just direct staff to write a letter of support. This template. Is there any other public comment at this time from public? Okay, seeing no hands, then we are going to move on to our agenda items. And the next one is reaffirm the findings in resolution 1192. A resolution of the city council, the city of Blue Lake, making findings pursuant to government code section 54953, an amendment by Assembly Bill 361, and authorizing the continued use of virtual meetings action. We have to do this every month as the campaign continues that we agree that we should keep meeting via Zoom. But it's still not safe for us to council chambers. So every month, oh, if there's no further comment and questions about this, we need a motion to adopt this findings of resolution number 1192.
I'll second.
Moved by Elaine Hogan, seconded by Chris Curran to reaffirm the findings of resolution number 1192. Is there any further discussion? Question from council? Anything from public? Coming back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. It seems like a lot of people enjoy this method of communicating with us. And that's fine. We can keep doing that. All right, item five, city of Blue Lake, small business grant program. Council should finalize the city of Blue Lake small business grant dispersment list and direct the city manager to disperse the funds in compliance with the federal COVID relief program, program regulations. This is a discussion and possible action.
Yeah, so we had brought this back to at the last meeting, and bring back to you a final list of recommended dispersment lists. And Emily's been doing a great job and worked with all of the businesses. And we've been working also with Humboldt Made, which has been really great. They've got a really great program that fits really well within the scope of what we're trying to do. In fact, they have a program called Our Town, which is like a downtown revitalization program. And this is something that they've been working with, especially in old town with like the Friday night markets and, you know, trying to get some of the smaller businesses in the old town area kind of rejuvenated and helping them kind of pivot with COVID and, you know, creating some shared success. And it's been, they've done a really great job. Part of that is like the mural projects, outdoor seating, landscaping, signage. So we were really excited to see that they have this program. And it fit really well with what we were hoping to do with, you know, some of our small businesses in our downtown to try and, you know, get things moving for kind of a spring or launch, especially with the new town square coming in. But it's not something that we have the expertise and house to do. You know, I could offer my opinion on what things that I think look nice, or as a customer, what I would resonate with myself. But they have an expertise and they have kind of a, a staff that they can kind of pull from depending on what you need. So they have designers, they have people who specialize in social media, marketing, you know, beautification, they have small business associates that can help look at a business, help them, you know, identify where their profit sectors are, maybe look at things a little differently, online marketing and things. So we met with Humboldt Made and they're really interested in working with us. So what we're proposing to do is offer a, a piece of what Humboldt House to offer to each of the businesses and to kind of bring them in totality so that we're cross-marketing and we're getting the businesses also start working together and thinking together and thinking a little more collectively on how we can do some larger scale social media marketing things to help them transition. So everyone's been very supportive of it and is excited about that opportunity. We are carving out a little, we're, while we're requesting to, a little bit more emphasis on a couple of the businesses that need a little higher end assistance. There are a little of our frontal retail with some design merchandising, signage, trying to drive, help them drive their revenue. So this is the final list that we, that we came up with. We had to kind of work with everyone because everyone applied for the max and we didn't have quite enough. But I do just to be receiving some additional support and being able to apply this to some items that will help them with their business and maybe help transition through COVID. So this is our final dispersment list that we're recommending for council to, to consider. And if you have any questions, Emily's also had with all of this and pulling this all together. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I was very excited to see this list. There's 12 local businesses that look like they've applied and, and have gone through the process. And I see just one of them looks like it's a loan. The others are actually, actually grant money. So thank you for all your hard work, Emily. Yeah, this is bringing some positive changes here. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, are there questions from council? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, were there any businesses that like had to be denied?
No.
No. Okay, so everyone
Everyone who applied.
Yeah. Okay, that's great. Yeah, I was just especially curious because we're carving out Humboldt Made, or nobody got cut out because that's, you know, a large, a large part of the 15 grand. Otherwise, yeah, I think it's great. And yeah, thanks for all your work.
How long does the like scope of work go with Humboldt?
Well, we haven't quite, we haven't really synthesized it yet. So, so we wanted to get council's authorization to move forward first. And then we really want to sit down. The other day, Alana came out, Alana Folsmith, I want to say Alana Powell, came out, walked around town. In that some of the businesses and just thought like kind of what are some of our focus areas? What are some of our strengths and weaknesses? You know, just kind of looking at, especially the downtown from like a customer standpoint versus a residence, like what is it that you see? What's attractive? What is, you know, not catching your eye? Or what is a little confusing? Or how can these things start to work together? And each of the businesses really was positive about getting some of that additional support. You know, they all said there was some level of their business that, that they needed some assistance with. So like say Blackberry Bramble with Al, he really wants some more assistance with his website. And he's been a Humboldt Made partner for years. And he said, you know, they, they've helped him so much over the years, but his website now needs to move to that next stage. And that's something that they can help with that he doesn't have the capacity to do. We talked with them about maybe creating like a Humboldt Made website where we, anything that Humboldt Made did, where they're kind of hosting the businesses and helping them keep kind of a higher end look, but not putting the burden on them to continually be updating it and managing it themselves. And it's something that we can kind of connect with the city of Blue Lake as well and the chamber, because we all use the same web platform. So as we're, as we're kind of building our capacity, we're also building our capacity to work together and share information and, and kind of link people together. Because that's one of the things that we're finding is there's a real kind of wall between all the, you know, the businesses are not necessarily connecting. I mean, they're all very busy and working hard, but they're not necessarily connecting to each other. So if the Larkdale's having an event, you know, is, you know, is abundance open at the same time, or they figure out ways to like, you know, drive customers around to each other. So, so some of that linkage, which can be like small business support, which is something that they offer as well. And it'll be helpful for city staff as well, you know, just not having, Emily's got a degree in business, I've got a minor in business, but you, we need some, we need someone else to kind of help with that end of things too.
So we've received the funding. We actually
We have the funding, yeah.
So now it's a matter of dispersment.
It is.
That might be a six months to a year process.
No, we're hoping to have it. I mean, the businesses really need it. So we had told them that we would like to, if we receive council's approval.
Yeah.
We, like I said, we've already done all of the work, you know, to synthesize it down, you know, get it to a place where it's affordable. So we'd like to move this forward this, in February.
Yeah.
So we'd like to get them their dispersment of their money for their specific items and then work with Humboldt Made to come up with kind of a scope that's, that's a little more applicable. I would probably recommend that we kind of piece it out a bit because there's aspects of what we would like Humboldt Made to do that are a little more specific to just like small business development, merchandising, all of that versus like the downtown revitalization, which is a little bit bigger scope that we can kind of expand on a little bit. So I kind of see them as two separate items, just because of the specifics of them are a little bit different. But yeah, we'd like to get the, we can get the checks cut really quickly.
Wow, good. That's great. That's good news. Any other questions from council? About this item, comments? Anything from public on this item of dispersment?
Lisa Hoover.
Lisa Hoofen, you would like to make a comment?
Yeah, I was just curious. I saw the agenda item. Is there a list of what the businesses are? Because there was just one, two, three, four, five, six. That would be, that's available.
Yeah, we didn't add, we didn't put the businesses' names on. We weren't really sure if it was appropriate to have their names. So we kept it a little bit generic. I'm just, I wasn't sure about, like I said, the, the appropriateness of listing when for like this. If it, it's possible that it's completely appropriate, but I wasn't sure. So.
But they're local, they're local, they're, they're businesses that are already here now? Is that what I understand?
Yes, they're all Blue Lake businesses.
Okay, I understand the ability, you know, the need to keep it sort of quiet. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your question, Lisa. Are there any other questions or comments from our audience? And seeing no hands. Okay, we'll come back to council and, and what's the desire of our city council this evening? There's a recommended motion to the funding recommendations made by staff and direct the city manager to disperse the funds in a manner that is compliant with city and federal regulations. That's the suggested motion.
So.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Ben McCree, seconded by Chris Curran to accept the funding recommendations by staff. City manager to disperse the funds in a manner that is with city and council. Anything from our audience, public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All right, item six, coal train operation draft letter, review the draft letter, direct staff as appropriate discussion, action, and action. A lot of cities have taken up this issue, particularly those that are, you know, close to the coast and the Bay Area, like the Rio, of course, is naturally one. But I thought that it still made sense for us to weigh in on our objection to this idea of bringing coal to Humboldt County. So, because it does affect, I think, every city in terms of our tourism and visitors. So I just thought it was something we could blend our, blend our voice to. Would you want to add anything, Andy?
Um, yeah, so at the last meeting, you asked me to bring a draft back. I, I tried to keep it a little bit generic, just because I didn't really want to put the city on the radar of, you know, some of the, some of the other groups. It could be a little bit more pointed. And, and so I thought kind of having a blanket statement might be easier for us, you know, that we support the Great Redwood Trail, we're part of it, we're concerned about environmental and cultural impact and tourism. Not necessarily taking, don't, don't loan this, don't let, you know, a railway come in again. But even if there's some thought in that direction, I didn't know if you wanted to take that strong of a position. And if you do, that is absolutely fine as well. There's just some concern because we do have a, an agreement with NCRRA for the rail banking. So, you know, we do have a trail. It's wonderful, but our agreement does state that in the future, if they ever did want to put a train back through here, they could put the tracks through the trail and would have to make that accommodation. So I, there was a little bit of, I, it was just
Diplomacy.
Yeah, diplomacy is a good word. But like I said, it's completely up to council to make that decision. And I don't know that it's the best letter. It was a little bit awkward to write, honestly, because I wanted to really go there. I was trying to massage it. So feel free to make any recommendations or changes. I'm totally open to all of that.
No, I like it. You can add an E at the end of my name at the bottom there. Let me do the drafts. But other than that, I'd be happy to sign this. And I understand where you're coming from, you know, we, we do have to walk a fine line here. But we are part of the trail system and we do want to go forward with that. As you pointed out, there's always that possibility in the future of what might happen. Any other thoughts on the letter?
I'd like to focus on the trail. When I was doing it.
It seemed a little easier. It was a little more
There are positions. I mean, you say that we're concerned and we support, you know, it's there. Okay, very good. Is there any input from public on this item? Seeing no hands, we'll come back to the motion. Do you have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign this letter?
I approve that we authorize the mayor to sign this letter and submit evidence.
One more second. Okay, motion made by Chris Curran. Hogan to authorize the mayor to sign the letter and from council. Any discussion from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All right, item seven, caretakers' cabin lease. Authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the current residential lease agreement with Kirsten Cohen. Is that how she pronounces her name? What's the rent on that place?
I know. You know what? I knew that was going to be asked.
I know. I should have called you before.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna, because I looked through this and I kept trying to find what it was. I was just curious.
No, I honestly, I don't know.
It's a one bedroom, one
It's a one, yeah, it's, it's very tiny. Just great for one person. And Kirsten's been a great tenant. She's been there. I think this is the fifth amendment to her lease agreement. I, I don't even want to hazard a guess. It's either a six or an eight. And I think it's a six and I, something like that.
Yeah. You don't know how many square feet the, the residence is, just the residence.
No. Like it's, it's pretty small.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's an oval.
Yeah.
It's been a long time since I did it.
Yeah.
All right, well.
Yeah, she's been a great tenant. She always pays on time. She's very quiet. She keeps a good eye out on the park for us. And, you know, it's, it's kind of a strange place to be sometimes. You know, you have a lot of people coming through your front door and, you know, walkway and stuff, but she seems to get in stride. So we would recommend that she continue to occupy the premises for sure.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from staff? Any questions or comments from our public? Seeing nothing, we'll come back for a motion in a second. Who would like to jump in this time?
I'd like to motion offer as the city manager to execute an amendment to the current residential lease agreement with Kirsten Cohen. I'll second.
Okay, motion done by Ben McCree, seconded by Chris Curran to direct the city manager to execute residential lease amendment number five between the city of Blue Lake and Kirsten Cohen. Any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Okay, Powers Creek district development update. And this is a discussion item.
Yeah, we don't have any action items to bring forward, but the council have requested that this be a standing item so that we can provide regular updates. There's, there's a few items to provide updates on. There's a lot of projects moving forward in the Powers Creek District. Probably the first item is that we have completed our surplus lands act notification process with the state. So we didn't receive any additional interest from other housing developers outside of the Anco communities who's been obviously expressed interest and would like to move forward with the project. So we're past that part of the process. It can move forward. would like to move forward with the project, so we're past that part of the process, it can move forward with those discussions. Staff will be bringing back to council the design development agreement, which is the next step in the process. The D D A is what will give Danco site control of the proposed property area so that they can begin some of the upfront work that needs to be done, including biological studies, cultural studies and things to see, to move the project forward to a point where council has a better idea of what they would be proposing. It'll also allow a higher level of design work to take place so that, and that will kick in kind of the community involvement so that we can, you know, start kind of fleshing out like what, what could this look like? What are some of the things that the community would like to see? How does it start to lay out on the property? It doesn't, it doesn't require that the project go forward, but it does require that they have a, a control of the property to a certain extent so that they know that the council isn't going to negotiate a sale or lease with someone else and, you know, kind of take it out from underneath them. So basically, it's allowing them to get to a certain point through the process and expend funds because there will be a lot of money that gets expended through this part of the process. So it kind of just provides that place holder. We'll be working with Storyland as well, that's the group that's coming in for the RV parking campground and additional business development analysis. And we've talked a lot with them about helping to facilitate more of the community outreach and forums and visioning and scoping, and it's something that they have a lot of experience in. And I think they're going to be really great to work with, and I think it's going to give the community that opportunity to really engage, because honestly, right now in the Powers Creek District, it's a blank slate. We, there is no theme, there is no vision. You know, we have some parameters, but we don't know what it's going to look like or what is palatable to the community. And we do need a theme, you know, and, and we've, we've stressed over and over that a theme isn't, you know, Disneyland, but a theme can be colors, it could be landscaping, it could be signage, you know, so finishes. And what is kind of that aesthetic value that we'd like to see down there? So I'm really excited, Storyland, we're in the process right now of just finalizing the contract. So it's kind of the long part of the process and not, you know, start that, that engagement. And they're really excited to come to Blue Lake and, and really work with everyone to kind of see what, how this can kind of transition to something that, you know, we can really see and feel good about. So, so that's all moving forward. We just fill the architect's hole. We've talked to them a lot about how they would interface with how that overlapped so that the designs that they would be talking about would also be incorporated, so we can kind of see how everything would work together. Because that's, ultimately, it's really critical that all these projects, you know, get designed together so that we have access points that make sense, and we have parking that makes sense, that we have trail networks that make sense, that we have amenities that make sense and all work together, so, so they're excited about that as well. So that's where we're at. With that part of the project, I think we'll be requesting council to have the meeting the second week in February just so we can move forward with the D D A, because there's a lot of work that needs to take place. Ethan Walsh, our consulting attorney, has prepared a draft. Russ Gans, our our city has reviewed it. City set the entitlement process, which is, what are the things that we'll be asking for out of the development? Mostly those will kind of revolve around infrastructure, so improvements to our wastewater treatment plant, trail improvements, parking, you know, some of the higher level foundational items. So. Carrying as part of this dialogue, so that's all taking place, and we hope to have that for council. We're getting a lot of interest and a lot of really good enthusiastic support for that project. Trevor's on, he's on here somewhere, he's right there. He's been working with the Redwood Coast Mountain Biking Association, Humboldt State Collective, some other community organizations to really move that forward, so I believe he even just got an offer for someone to donate all the materials this week, which was really exciting. So we really see the bike park as a feature amenity for the community. I think it's going to be really exciting and it's going to bring a lot of interest to the area. So that project is moving forward speedily. I don't, Trevor, do you want to provide any update on that?
Yeah, sorry about that, I had a little fit there. I had to step out, so yeah, were you just talking about the bike park and the updates regarding that? Okay, yeah, specifically related to that, we just had a contact from Pacific Builders, I believe. They reached out because they have a contract for the site in Arcata where they're, they're doing some building and they're already built into their contract at the site by the skate park in Arcata is the removal of the materials. So I'm going to go review the materials tomorrow, and if everything checks out and it has a good sandy loam mixture, then it'll be, save us about seventy-five hundred bucks, so they'll come deliver it to the site since that's already in their contract and it'll save them money to release the materials to us and we'll finally start to move forward with phase one. And if not, I'll just keep grinding and writing grants until we figure it out and begging people for money. Yeah, that's the update on the bike park, I'm really excited to move forward with the project. We had a lot of community support. Volunteers with bobcats and excavators and everything you could ever imagine, so couldn't be more excited for the project.
I, I can't hear you, there's a lot of, there's some breaking up going on, please.
I believe they're frozen on the city council end.
Yeah.
Um, so.
We couldn't, we couldn't hear, we couldn't hear what you said for the last two or three minutes.
Oh dear, okay.
You were, you were. All right, how about now?
Fine now.
We were frozen?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so why don't we continue with the restart about the Calgon Carbon project?
Yeah, so, so there's discussions around the Calgon Carbon property for the possibility of Slice of Humboldt, I think that's called, right, it's somewhere Humboldt, I can't remember. Slice of Humboldt to possibly work with a development partner to come in and possibly use that site for production and possibly a retail outlet. They would like to transition to their own facility or possibly the new facility in Powers Creek eventually, but they do need quite a bit of square footage for processing thing and, but they'd also like to do the retail side, so. So those are, you know, we've been trying to kind of facilitate people, you know, coming together and finding a buyer for that site that would be something that would work well within the community. So, so that's one of the discussions taking place, so that's pretty exciting.
Now, that's a, that's pie making?
Yeah, so they do, so they have Humboldt or Slice of Humboldt in Arcata.
Okay.
So they have a restaurant and they, yeah, they sell savory pies, they sell sweet pies, like, oh. Their, and their food is really great, their restaurant's really fun.
So they want to open someplace where they can make their product here and there is a possibility that they also may open like a little restaurant or.
So they like to do those, so they need a production site and they also want another retail site. So they would be a great addition to the community, really nice ladies, they lived in Blue Lake prior and have been trying to get back to Blue Lake. You know, they just have, they've worked really hard to have this great little business and it's really kicking off. So I think they're looking to do a higher wholesale production line, but also recognizing that the retail side is, you know, what really gets people hooked and, and people buy, you know, I, every time they go in, they're making a whole pie too.
You're familiar with. It's a opportunity to co-op and share space with the local cider bar, bittersweet.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so they're, they're a great business that we've been trying to cultivate for a long time to find a space for them out here. So it's nice that they're still in conversation. You know, we've been talking with them about Ryan Russo's site, if that would work for them, they've been working together. So we're working a lot of, you know, angles to see how we can, you know, provide a, a space for them out here, so.
Good, okay. City of Blue Lake Housing Element update?
Yeah, so we are getting very close on having a draft housing element. We are proposing to have it to the planning commission, we'd like to have a special meeting with the planning commission the first week of February, get them a draft, present the draft and then give them time to read it and then come back at their next meeting to have further discussions. As possible that at their second meeting in February, they could recommend that it go to council for review. We really do need to get our housing elements updated and that. It really is hampering a lot of opportunities for the city. We're, we're not on, we're not on the naughty list, but we're, we're teetering. We're kind of on the list of like, you better, you better clean your room quickly or you're, you know, grounded type list. So we do have the sixty-five thousand that the state has given us to update this and get into compliance. And so we're, we're very close, so we're excited about that, it's been a lot of work. S H N, Gary Reese has been working on that. You know, there's just a lot of state mandates that we just have to comply with these days, there's not a lot of wiggle room anymore. With the housing crisis, the state is being very forceful in their intentions for us to come into compliance. So, so we're excited about that, that will also be coming back to council in February and hopefully we can move that forward.
So the planning commission is meeting the first week in February?
We're going to try and have an earlier meeting, I think their, their regular meeting is the sixteenth. But we thought if we could have one earlier, at least we could present the draft, it would give them time to take it back and read it, think about it, and then have questions for their regular meeting. It just gives us, it just puts us one step ahead of the process. And I think you guys meet like the next day or something, but.
Well, February has, the first of February is a Tuesday, so the eighth is the second, the second Tuesday in February. So if you want to have a meeting on that night, you said there might be a need.
Yeah, I think for council it's possible, it's I think we would just want to probably discuss the D D A with the mayor and then whatever kind of, February is just a really short month, so it's treat stuff on us really quickly. But so that's progressing and it's, we're getting very close, so we've made some really big progress on that, which is great. And then the Clean California Grant is a grant that we're going to be applying for. I believe it's this week or the first of next week. The grant will, that we're applying for is an opportunity to kind of upscale recreation spaces. So they're looking at focusing on cleaning up space and making space, a recreation space and public space more accessible and more inviting. So there's a lot of things you can do, you can do trash removal, dump site cleanups. One of the things that we would like to do is to put lighting along the trail because it makes it a safer space, that's another item that's, that's eligible. So I think, you know, we have a lot of dark spaces along our trail, so doing some nice lighting along the trail would make it a more functional space. We're also looking at possibly working with the museum to do a mural. And if we can partner also with the Yop tribe on that to have that cultural element, then, you know, that's an added bonus. So, so we're really looking right now at a mural, solar lights along the trail and some additional trash receptacles and recycling receptacles.
Museum would probably be really in favor of the lighting because they're affected by a dark area. Have a lot of need to be safe and have a part of that.
We're looking at the west end of the building, because I believe that's the only part of the building that's not technically historical. The rest of the building is historical and it's possible that they would like to put it on the historical registry. And if you do the mural or any modifications, it can impact that, so talk to Cynthia about doing it on the west end. Having a really nice mural, you can do posters, you can sell postcards, you can do it as part of your marketing. And it, you know, it's kind of a draw, if you do it right, you can also have it so people can, you know, take a picture of themselves like as part of the mural. So, you know, there's ways to connect it to the museum as well and help, you know, encourage people to go in and see what the museum has to offer too, so there's some marketing opportunities there as well.
Yeah, we could ever open.
Right. We're going to get there.
Yeah, okay, um, are there any questions or comments from council? There's a lot going on here, it's very about the dining, I think, and for the most part, it's very progressive.
I have two questions, one about the housing element update and one about the trail lighting.
Yeah.
So with the housing element update, are there going to be, do you know, like provisions for ADUs? Because that was part of it, right, the state came in with ADU mandates and we had to follow them because we didn't have our housing element in compliance, but are we building in some sort of provision to make ADUs kind of easier for people to build? Like.
Yeah, absolutely, in fact, we're under the state mandate right now, so our, our regulations don't even apply.
Right.
We literally have the state ADU regulations printed up for anyone who wants to consider it. We're like, here you go, don't even look at our stuff, just look at this. And we've talked too about adopting some, you know, Eureka and the county have adopted some designs already that, you know, are helpful for people, kind of that pre-permitted design process. So we've talked about, you know, maybe bringing some of that forward as well. I mean, there's no reason that we can't even just work with what Eureka and Humboldt County have and be like, you know, here, we can, you can use these too. So, and I'm really excited about the ADUs and, you know, that opportunity. I think it's, especially with housing being so expensive, it's an opportunity for people to, you know, help with their mortgages and, you know, accommodate more people in the community, so. So there's definitely like the low hanging fruit items that, you know, are just kind of the like, we just don't have a choice. You know, we, they have to be implemented. And then there's parts of the element that are a little bit more like, we can make them a little bit more Blue Lake centric, but still working within the box of the states putting us in.
Okay, and then my next question is about the trail lighting. Are we talking pedestrian scale lighting or are we talking like giant shining street light?
No, we'd be talking pedestrian scale, so, you know, we would like them to also be aesthetically pleasing. So kind of, you know, maybe like the, the old fashioned, you know, down light that, and, you know, we have the standards already in the opportunity zone and we, we went through an extensive process to, you know, identify those regulations. So, you know, the lumens and the night dark sky regulation, so everything would have to be compliant with that. But yeah, really more of a pedestrian scale lighting.
Okay, and since we'll be within the international dark sky standards, I assume there is no concern of like affecting like any nocturnal wildlife, I think we need to be mindful of as well.
Yeah, I don't believe so, and I believe because of the locations, them being along the trail, you know, they're more of a, not like urban setting, but more of an impacted setting. So we, and I, you know, we can be cognizant of, you know, the, like the creek area. But ultimately, we do need some lighting out there, there's some really dark spaces and we, you know, there's a lot of times where like even if I'm to a fire call, like, you know, late at night, you know, I'll do some extra laps round, have to see. And it's amazing how many people are out walking their dogs at like two o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, like, you know, people, you know, maybe they're getting off work, maybe they're working a graveyard shift or something and they. You know, people, you know, maybe they're getting off work, maybe they're working a graveyard shift or something and they come home and go for a walk, you know. And it's, it's very dark and I get really concerned about, you know, someone tripping and falling or, you know, um, just, it's also a crime prevention, you know, type, uh, initiative as well. Dark spaces affect, you know, dark behavior, so, um, having those areas more lit keeps them safer as well.
Any other questions from our council? Okay, is there any input from the public on this item? This is a discussion item only. They have Lisa, Lynn and Elise. Lisa, would you like to go first?
Yeah, um, yes. First of all, are these developments that you're referring to, are these the Danko ones that you were referring, talking about? Danko development?
The design development agreement with Danko, yes, that's one of the things we've been talking about.
Okay, and what trail are you referring to? Is it the Annie and Mary that's in Blue Lake, in the town of Blue Lake?
Actually, it's, it's the full trail network, so we call it the, um, the Levy Loop Trail as well as the Annie and Mary Trail.
Okay, and, um, let's see if I can, um, there were, um, a couple of items, um, that you didn't, on the, in the, in the agenda items, there's a truck route study and design.
We're not, we're not, we're not on that spot yet.
Okay, then, um, and a question on the Calgon Carbon. It says that, that in the notes, Calgon has proposed that the city of Blue Lake and a local developer work together to acquire the property. So the city is looking to buy that property?
No, so the city is looking, has been looking at ways to facilitate a sale. And there has been, um, some recommendation from Calbon that the city be a partner in the acquisition. And so we've looked at, um, if there's possibilities to help facilitate that.
So to facilitate, but not to be the landowner?
Um, it could be, it could be that the city could become the landowner. We're not, you know, that it's kind of, we're kind of looking at a whole bunch of different options to help, uh, Calbon transition that property. So it's one option that's being considered. Right now, it's not really rising to the top of the list. It'd be better for, I think, a private, um, entity to purchase it. But, um, there could be an opportunity for the city to be a partner as well.
Okay, and I think lastly, you know, the agenda item that I solicited put in, um, where is that in this? Because you kind of went in and out at the beginning that I asked about a public forum for the Power Creek District overall. Is that something that can be? This, Mandy, has to do with, you said, I submitted this in advance of the meeting and so I'm not sure when that's going to come up. And it may have come up, but it was kind of garbled before. I'm not sure if there's an opportunity to have a forum for Power Creek District only. Because when I looked at the agendas in the past, folks have asked for more public input. Back in, uh, October as well as, um, November. And so the, the pace of this is going pretty fast and I think it's time for an updated meeting to go over Power Creek District. Cause the view that was presented to, I think, is they call Storyland or Storyboard. I mean, it talked about fishing guide services, um, lodging, uh, sports complex and festival space, uh, RV park and campground development. So there's a scale there that is pretty significant. That was in the presentation for the request for proposal to Storyland. So they're coming in with that, there was a vision that was put in there, but I'm not sure where it came from. So I think, I'd like to ask that there be a forum, if not one, just two, just periodically now. Because, um, I'm not sure that vision reflects the city of, the community of Blue Lake. And there was an ad, a request for this, like I said, um, I see some names here on this, uh, on the table here that, um, had also wanted, um, to be sort of a little bit request for outreach a little bit more. So that's the thing I put in and I, I don't know, I'd like to see if the city could schedule that. A Power Creek District focused thing to update the community and come to some understanding, because there's a lot going on at a pretty rapid fa- uh, pace. So where is, can I get a, can the council agree to do that or have a meeting with that? Cause I'm not alone in this request.
Okay, thank you. For your comment, Lisa, your letter was written, uh, read, excuse me, at the be- beginning of the meeting during the public, um, input. So we do have it as matter of record. And we have talked about this, that the difficulty we're having and everyone is having with some kind of a public forum is because of the pandemic. We really are not able to eat it comfortably in a setting where we can be safe. And that's one of the biggest problems. I mean, our, our city council meetings are completely open. We're making them, uh, available by Zoom and, you know, any other way we can do this. But at the moment, the idea of having some sort of a big public meeting at the Grange or something like that, is just not something we can do right now. Even if we would want to do it, it's just not a good idea with the numbers in Humboldt County, the way they are. And with the, the fear of this pandemic still in our minds, I personally do not feel comfortable having a large gathering of people to discuss something. Every council meeting that we have is an opportunity for people to, to talk about this. And every opportunity that you have to email any one of us or talk to any one of us, we're completely open to that. You know, I really don't feel that we're keeping people out. I think we're being completely transparent about this. And there are a lot of people that I talk to that are very much for what we're doing. And, you know, this is the vision that this council has, has directed our staff and board with. So that's kind of my position and, um, you know, any other council person can jump in if they'd like.
Yeah. Agree on the receptivity, because I've tried to send emails and I just get, um, I just, there's not communication forums. And maybe if there's a forum that is on a Zoom, but the focus is Power Creek, not a council meeting. Because there's some, there are so many nuances, because you're, you're moving at a pace that, um, there's some value to some of this. But there's also a scale concern that was presented in the outreach that went out to request for proposal that, uh, fishing guide services, yeah, resort, uh, was the word used, lodging. And so I think the public, uh, um, I, like I said, there may be some public that that makes their vision. But I think, um, you're moving forward on things and yet there's not been the time, um, to kind of catch up with that. It's, I mean, with the public. So even if it's a Zoom forum, for those that focuses on the Power Creek, that has been my request. And I'm not the first person who's requested that at a public meeting, so.
Okay, go ahead.
I know, I'd like to see some sort of, uh, sort of visioning or scoping meeting. But Mandy had mentioned earlier, we might have cut out, but Mandy had mentioned that, um, the Storyland comes in, they're gonna help with some of this. And, uh, sort of as we move through this DDA process too, it'll be kind of more time to start having those meetings. But it's, it's definitely something that's on all of our minds too.
But the story, what went out to Storyland included things like, uh, lodging, event space, rental facilities, kayak bike rentals, all that kind of stuff. That's when it went out to Storyland. So are they gonna come with that, thinking that's the vision of the community?
Lisa, I, I think maybe I cut out, um, and maybe you didn't hear the update about what the kind of the next steps are. So Storyland is going to be coming on to help facilitate some of that community dialogue. We don't, we don't know at this point what this community or this market can support. And that is exactly the work that Storyland is being hired to do. So they're going to be facilitating those community discussions. They'll also be doing a lot of economic analysis to see what the, um, best option is for the city to look at for, uh, revenue, um, development and recreation development. You know, we do have kind of a, a benchmark that we've, um, been directed to, you know, to kind of move forward towards, which has been a recreation-based economy. Um, and that's where a lot of our effort is being placed. And so when we look at, you know, opportunities for the city, we're kind of looking at it through that lens. But Storyland is the professional that's going to come aboard to really help us, um, through that process. And a lot of that is the visioning, uh, working with the community to kind of see, you know, what, what is the area? What is the carrying capacity of the area? What would we like to see it look like? Because that's not something that, that I can, um, I can really help facilitate at this point. We really need a professional to do that. So that's exactly what you're asking for, is what our next step is.
So again, it's the idea, because again, a reading what was written and presented really did paint a different vision picture than what you're saying there. Because it talks about, you know, uh, being recreation centric lodging was another word that came up in the thing. And, uh, we all know the riverine system has had some troubles. And so I just, I, um, I just had presented a picture of like, you know, something bigger than what, uh, this community is and what the people, many people who live here. So I, I just, uh, destination, recreation destination, I, that seems like that was put out there. And I've been trying to figure out where those, that's, that came from. And I think there are members of the public that we want to balance it out a little bit more than what was presented in your proposals that went out to this, this entity. So that raised my concerns when I read the material that was in the agenda, so, I mean, the agenda packet.
And as, as the, you know, as a resident, that, you know, that's well within your purview to express those, concerns and ideas and, you know, and there's others that have, you know, something that may differ. So we'll be working through a process to really kind of determine what.
We're going on that someone else now, but thank you for your, um, comments and questions. Is there anyone else that would like to, uh, make a question or comment concerning this agenda item?
Lynn Glenn and Elise.
Okay, Lynn Glenn, you're on next. Lynn, can you hear us?
Okay. I, my, I had to, I had to click twice. Sorry about that. So thanks, um, to, uh, to Lisa, I, I agree with her about the public meetings. I think, um, the council meetings are open to the public as we know, um, but they have long agendas and a lot of people have busy lives and can't really sit through to the point that they, portion that they need to speak to. And also I think it's a much clearer communication to the public to let them know we are having a meeting about the Powers Creek District. We want to hear from you. So I'm, I'm really glad to hear from Mandy that that's planned, really for the near future, I hope. The other thing I wanted to, I had a couple of questions about the design process, the DDA. So I'm wondering, um, so if the design process is completed and it comes before the council and the council decides that they really have some serious objections to big parts of that, of the design for some, for some reason. I don't know what, what that would be, but if that happened, um, is the council free to reject, um, the entire design? And reject Danko as, uh, as the construction company to provide that, um, or just construct that project? Would there be, would, would there be any repercussions legally or would it be a problem if they just wanted to switch companies? Or if they just wanted to reject the whole idea altogether? Would that be a problem? And the second question is, would there be any changes made to the property? That would make it unsuitable for some other type, like if they wanted to expand the bike park into the whole thing. I'm just making that up, of course. But if there, if the council had some, some major concerns and wanted to go in a different direction, would there be any reason they could not do that legally?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, so absolutely, the council, um, the council has the final say. The DDA doesn't, um, commit them to a final project. But it does commit them to allowing a, um, an aspect of the project to move forward, which is the design and preliminary analysis, uh, work to move forward kind of unhindered to some extent. Mostly that the, the, the city wouldn't, um, negotiate with another developer while that process was taking place. Uh, I think the other aspect of this that, um, is important to remember is that the city is not looking at selling the property. The city is looking at leasing the property. And so that puts the city in a very strong position to determine the scope and, um, kind of breadth of the project. Can you still hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, you know, so we're not, the, the council is really in the driver's seat when it comes to the design of this project. And we've been in the driver's seat, you know, the whole time. So as we look at, you know, the size, the number of units, um, the commercial retail space, the recreation amenities, the, um, the aesthetics, those are all things that the council and the city, this is really a partnership. It's not just a developer coming in with a cookie cutter type idea and presenting it. This is really from the ground up, the, the city's, um, project. So we, we don't have to move forward if we don't like it. We, we're driving project in the direction, um, you know, that, that we hope to see it move forward in and within the confines of the opportunity zone that we've been talking about for three and a half years. So it's a very engaged process. It, like I said, it's not a cookie cutter development by any means. And so the city council is in full control all the way up until they either decide that they don't want to do it at all or that they want to move it forward to the next phase.
Thanks for your questions, Lynn. Thank you for joining us. And then Elise, would you like to, um, make your questions and comments now? And then I see Kit, Kit Man's hand is up. But Elise, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Good, great. Hi.
Hi, um, so I have a question about the notification process. So at the last, um, council meeting, which was, I believe, in November, it was stated that once the land was, um, determined, you know, voted to deemed surplus, then a notification process would happen. And, um, then tonight, it, we were told that the notification process is complete and Danko is the only interested party. So I'd like to hear what that notification process was exactly and what the duration of notification was and how and when that took place exactly.
Sure, I can answer that. So the notification process is required by the state of California. Um, and the Housing and Community Development Department of the state is the one that facilitates that process. So the council was required to pass a resolution determining that the land was surplus. And then that resolution and notification, there's a, there's a template, um, document that you have to complete. Um, and then you provide that to HCD and then they provide you with a list of qualified, uh, developers in, um, that are on their list that have asked to be notified. And this is just for how, affordable housing. Uh, it's not for any other type of, uh, project that, um, the notice is specifically to give people an opportunity to, show their interest to do affordable housing. So there's a huge list of people on, um, HCD's, uh, interest group. And we sent out our documents to each and every one of them. It's a sixty-day process. Uh, that process was done, I believe, on January twelfth. So we're, um, pretty far beyond that, the last of the, the notification process. We didn't receive any interested, um, intent, uh, from any developers. We, um, we received one email from someone who said they would be interested, but they never followed up and they didn't return any phone calls. So, um, at this point, the city, the city doesn't have to do a project. Just have to make our, any properties that are undeveloped in the city, each year, we're gonna have to go through this process. It's a state mandated process. So we've gone through the process and now the city can entertain other projects, they can entertain. So we've gone through the process and now the city can entertain other projects. They can entertain um affordable housing projects. They get to entertain business development, recreation, but whatever they want. So um it's a formality that the state is requiring.
Okay, and you said it's a sixty day process and it was done in January, so that indicates that it was started at the beginning of November. Is that correct?
I believe that's when we passed the resolution. Yeah.
I thought that that meeting happened at the end of November. Am I incorrect about that?
I believe you're incorrect.
Okay. Um and so this land was is only available for affordable housing. Is that what you're saying?
No. We just have to provide a notification that the city has undeveloped land. And if interested parties are interested in doing affordable housing projects. The city has to entertain any proposals and negotiate in good faith. It doesn't mean that the city has to do a project, but they do have to make the property available for discussion. It's the state's mandate now with the housing crisis that they're requiring all municipalities. If you have undeveloped lands, you have to make them available for at least for a good faith process. To um look at affordable housing development opportunities.
I just want to be clear that uh the process is is publishing that available land to organizations and developers. Interested in affordable housing.
Yes.
Is that what you said? So yeah, so whether or not the whether or not the land is used for that purpose, those are the people that are being notified that it's available.
Yeah, yes.
So developers with other types of projects in mind would not be aware that that land might be available.
Right, through that process, yes.
Okay. Um so um. That all being said, um I do want to um speak to the topic that Lisa brought up. And also that Lynn supported that um this process seems to be happening quickly. And um I understand that you folks might be um aware of happenings and developments as they're going on throughout the month. But the public is not aware of any of that information and it always, it comes to us. Um once a month or once every other month at a city council meeting on an agenda item. And um so we're not aware of what's happening in the meantime. And other than calling City Hall and talking to people and asking questions, there's no available source of information as to what might be developing. Out of the public eye. And so um I don't understand why there can't be um some ongoing information, a source of information. That anybody can tap into at any time, something that can be linked to through the city website. You know, I've been told before and um Adeline said it tonight, well, you can call any one of us and talk to us about this. Well, we don't always want to talk to somebody and ask questions. We want, we I think we're expecting that there's going to be some non-biased information. That's available to anyone who's interested in reading it and educating themselves about the process that's underway. And the possibilities that are happening and the plans that are happening. So um and I can't say that I'm, I know the rules or the laws that require the city to put that information forward. Or to make it accessible, but I feel like um calling calling people on the phone shouldn't be the only way that we can get information and find out what's happening. Uh because again and again, at city council meetings, it's it seems like we're being a little bit blindsided. Every time these things come on the on the agenda, it's like, oh, you know, here's what we're doing this month. We're um negotiate, we're putting together a negotiation team and oh, we're not putting together a negotiation team. Nothing's happening. Oh, now Danco is the only party interested and they're going to have exclusive rights to the property and they're going to work on a design. But we don't have to agree to it, but at the next meeting, we're going to find out, oh, the design was great. We love it. We're going to vote to um to ratify that. And we're all going to go forward and Danko is going to build something. And I think again and again and again, um community members are telling you at council meetings, this is not okay. We're not okay with this process the way it's happening. We're not okay with things happening where we're not aware of what's going on. And then we have a few minutes where we can comment at a city council meeting, but we're not really at a city council meeting. We're all in our own kitchens. In front of our computers where we don't really seem to have much of an impact on the council members. Because numerous times we've all, uh a number of people have voiced concern and opposition to your actions. And you've gone ahead and and finished those, you know, gone ahead and voted yes on those actions that we were opposing. So once again, I want to point out that you are, we have a situation here in the city. Where a lot of people feel that the council is not responsive to the needs and the interests of the of the residents of the city. And each time we come to you and we say, hey, we don't like this. We don't like what's going on. You just say, oh, well, just call us and talk about it. Well, here we are to tell you what how we feel and we feel that it's your responsibility as council members to take action. Based on what we're saying at these council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Thank you. Um Kit Man, you hand us up.
Yeah, um thank you. It it a couple of comments. One, it's unfortunate that the. Design Development Agreement is called a Design Development Agreement because really it's just something that gives. Danco some certainty that they can do the studies that are necessary to even begin to think about a design. It doesn't mean that they're designing. And at any rate, it's too bad that wording is such. I understand, though, that it it gives them this right. But really, what I wanted to talk about was trail lighting. And um I would just like to express that I would be very concerned about seeing any kind of trail lighting on the. Wild part of the trail behind our house along the creek. I think that um impacts on wildlife in the Riparian Corridor would be significant. And uh I'd like to really suggest that you not put lighting along the creek. I think that is going to affect um the the creek animals and all that kind of stuff. And uh certainly any photons that fell on my property would be very um badly received. Uh so that's a, that's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are good. Those are good comments and something I think we really should consider, maybe leaving that portion. I know it's dark and I'm sorry for the people that are deciding at two AM to walk along the a dark trail. But maybe they should wear a headlamp or something. I don't know. At some point, there is some other things to consider. So thank you for your input on that, Kit. Is there any other questions or comments from our public tonight on this item? Okay, as I said, this is a discussion item only and I really appreciate everyone in their kitchens or wherever they are zooming in to join us. And I hope we can all be together as soon as possible. Um and we're going to move on without any further need to discuss this. Oh, hello. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, just just quick quickly, when I asked about the trails, I was thinking sort of akin to Kit Man's comment. And about the the levee trail, for example, or the trail that's near creeks or some type of thing that would be utilized by certain species. And nighttime is an important time to have a night, not well lit up. So I wanted to concur with what was just said by Kit Man. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. It's something really like to consider. I think here in town, it's maybe more necessary. But maybe there should be some areas of the.
Yeah, we could totally consider that. I mean, I know that the not animals have no problem coming to my house with all my lights on, but we definitely can look at that issue.
Okay, good, good. Um thank you all again. And item nine, council correspondence.
Yes, so the only um correspondence we received was um the comments that were read earlier. And I wasn't sure, um I'm never quite sure on this process because sometimes you guys receive things separately. And so I always leave this kind of open and I don't know if it's the way you're supposed to do it. But in case you have received anything that you wanted to report back, um I always kind of leave it as an open.
Oh, I see. So it's more of have we received any correspondence that we need?
Yeah, sometimes you guys get stuck directly in the mail. Some stuff gets emailed to you.
The train, the whole train people that notified me since that was made, okay. So has anyone received any correspondence that they would like to report on during this time? All right, so that puts us to the council agenda, uh the consent, excuse me. Um and we have three items. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda or do we have a motion to approve consent agenda? Motion by Chris Curran, seconded by Ben Crease to approve the consent agendas and any further discussion from council. Anything from public on this item? Back to council for the vote. All of us in favor say aye. Aye opposed. It passes. Reports of council and staff. So this is where I go around and um ask if anyone has got any meetings from the councils. Just um some of the days not here this evening, so we won't get a report from her um commissioner. Where she is, um representing the city. Uh Ben, did you uh attend any meetings in the last month? If you like before, okay. Elaine, would you like to report on any meetings?
Yeah, um Home Waste Management Authority, I think I reported last time. We have a new executive director. And um we've also hired consultants to um work on SB thirteen eighty three. Um implementation on a regional level for everyone that's that's uh in the JPA. And so um they have started working, Mandy might be more involved than I am, obviously. But um they've started working with the local task force, which is a group made up of the city managers. And that's kind of the primary group that's moving forward with the consultants. And they've been up here to do some visiting and kind of see our area and what resources we already have. SB thirteen eighty three is um mostly about organic waste composting and diversion of edible food from the waste stream. And so kind of their first step um is submitting a bunch of waivers for uh municipalities that are eligible like ours. Uh because of our size and so they're starting on that process. And I know there's like an edible food recovery meeting this Friday that um the consultants have invited uh people to. To hear more from a group called, I think, Abound, that they've worked with in the past on um edible food recovery. And so it sounds like things are moving forward and I'll have more updates uh as as they move through the process.
I'm just, um so the city has applied for our waiver. So Trevor, Trevor's kind of our point of contact for this because he handles our recycling grant as well.
Oh, okay.
And so he's getting a really quick introduction to SB thirteen eighty three. And we were able to get our waiver um submitted, uh which was great. And we actually had uh Trinidad had actually called us to see how we had managed it and to see um how we had gone about the process. Because CalRecycle had um given Trevor lots of kudos for getting it all done and timely. And uh being able to, you know, manage through the system. So that was good. Um and so we're, we're just kind of trying to figure all this out as well. There's like some money that just got. Um put through the system that we could apply for, but it's kind of like, we're going to give you money, but then we're going to hook you into doing a bunch of stuff you can't afford to do. So everyone's trying to figure out a lot of um a lot of this, but yeah, so we're, the city is um is definitely staying. At the forefront of the issue.
I attended an HCOG meeting last Thursday. And uh we uh the HCOG finally, uh we were one of the last to support. The countywide traffic safety task force proclamation and that full um provision uh zero goal to work towards. Eliminating all traffic fatalities. Those are the go slow, watch the road signage that you've been seeing around the county. And so that's been really successful. So we signed on to that. Um we also um as far as Lululeah was concerned. The HCOG board approved letters of support for the cities of Lululeah and Eureka for their Clean California Grant application. So hopefully that'll help Lululeah get our grant going. We had a report um from the new uh HCOG. Well, she isn't new, but she's been there a year now. So she did a year in highlights of what's been going on from her perspective for the year. Uh we got a regional transportation plan update. The plan that's called GROOM, which is one of the acronyms that we all use in these government agencies. Um we received a report from Caltrans on the one oh one quarter. And also um the last chance grade, which apparently is in good shape right now. Uh and next month, we're going to have a uh report from Susan Arnelis because she's working on a project for HCOG. Um and we uh got the, we've got a new set of board. The chairperson was re-upped. Mike Johnson from Fortuna will be the chair of HCOG again. Uh but Mayor Seaman is now the vice chair because Virginia Bass is stepping down from HCOG. And then Mayor Salz or Atkins is the executive committee chair. And then Stephen Davis is the CalCOG chair. So he'll represent us at CalCOG, which is where all of the northern area get together. And we went into closed session for one year performance evaluation of our executive director. Thought I have any, I have all that information here if anyone's interested in looking at it further. Um Chris Curran.
To economic development, uh I think most of what we talked about was covered in tonight's meeting with the grant. And uh we're trying to come over there. There is one opening, I think, on the Economic Development Commission. Yeah, so it'd be nice to get that seat, though.
Yeah, we're recruiting.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the one that has to be in the city with Lululeah? Is that the one that can be in the housing areas, do you remember?
I believe it has to be in the city because Cindy Trobitz is technically outside the city limits.
Yeah, she is. That's my thought.
Yeah, yeah. We have a couple of people that are interested um that I think would be really good. So it's just a matter of getting people to follow up with like, you know, we need the applications that can go to council. And so we'll be um we'll be handing out applications pretty soon when we get them to follow through.
Do the fire department have a meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I know this month. Last month was mostly business. Yeah.
Okay, um city manager report, we have that in our packet. So um thank you for the.
Any questions?
Very uh complete. Projects going on and a lot of changes. And um and then your to-do list also was very good.
Yeah, and so and just that one, I don't publicize that one just because it does have um people's names and stuff. So but it is a tracking mechanism first off.
I see, okay. So is there any questions for Mandy, that her manager's report?
I would be complimented. I think it's really easily digestible because it's a good mix of like things that have been brought up in council meetings and not. Um so it's, 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 it's a great like, great rundown.
And this is part of what people get with the packet online, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's not the tracking.
Right, 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 yeah. Yeah, because I almost think it's like your little newsletter, you know, like updates from City Hall. Here's what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, I, there's not anything that's happening that's not public by any means. You know, um and I understand, you know, people are looking for other mechanisms. And we are trying to, Emily's helping a lot with the website to try and get more information on it. Um you know, we're, we're definitely, I don't have a ton of techy skills, but she's helping through that process. And I know we do have a placeholder for the Powers Creek District, so we can provide updates, but we really just haven't had. Anything concrete. You guys really haven't taken any real action on anything yet. So there's most of what is happening is still dialogue and discussion and we really just haven't had um anything to, you know, put up there. You know, it's, it's really been more dialogue at this point. So I anticipate, though, as we move forward, there will be opportunities to, you know, show preliminary designs. Or ideas and concepts, but we don't, we don't, we honestly don't have anything at this point, so.
And this thing that's happening around town with uh PG&E and the little pink flags and all that kind of thing. Can you give us a little rundown of what what that is exactly?
Yeah, so uh PG&E is going to be doing a gas line replacement project in the next year or so. And their, their plan right now is they're going to do a citywide project. Um they've never done a whole city all at one time, but because we are. They've never done a whole city all at one time, but because we are a little bit smaller, they feel like it's a manageable project. So rather than, I mean, really like if you think about the size of our city, it's kind of like the size of some cities' neighborhoods. So it's, it's somewhat manageable. So what they're having to do though right now is because our infrastructure is really old and we don't have a lot of as-built and we don't know really what's going on under the ground as things have settled. You know, and there might be laterals that we don't really know about. They're going through APS's hammering all of our wastewater lines and the laterals for all the residences because the, the concern is that there could be some crossover with infrastructure. And so they want to make sure that they're not going to dig for a gas line and hit a sewer line or vice versa. So it's actually providing us with a lot of really great information that we didn't have, that we had talked about doing in the future. But it's just such a high cost item, the camera, the whole city. So they'll be taking that data and then translating that to some GIS data as well. So it'll be really usable for us in the future to know where all of our infrastructure is. So it's really kind of exciting on that end. I'm not really sure how this is all going to, to play out with a large scale gas line replacement. But I think it's important as we've seen issues in other communities with gas line failures, infrastructure failures that we do, I'm glad that they're taking this step. I think they'll be doing a lot of directional drilling. So I don't think there'll be, there'll definitely be some areas where they do open trenching. But a lot of what they're looking at is maybe some directional drilling. So that's, that's a lot less wear and tear on our, our city streets and things. But you know, if they have to open it, they have to repave it too. So that might be helpful as well. So it's a big project and you know, it's, we weren't really sure of the whole scope. So when APS started coming out and flags started popping up, and they're popping up on city property too. We were like, what are you guys doing? You know, so we're getting a little bit better at communicating. They've been really good at like talking to the neighbors and letting people know where they're going to be. And they've, they've done a pretty good job there. So far, they've been very pleasant to work with and we're getting some really good data.
So this company APS is being contracted by PG&E to do this work.
Yeah, and so this is all within the PG&E right-of-way. So even, you know, going up to the houses, they, from the meter to the street, you know, they have to have access. So this is all part of, you know, the right-of-way easement agreements you sign when you, when you have a development. Some of these older homes are having to go in through roof vents because there's not adequate cleanouts on the wastewater system. So the only way they can get into the line, to see where the lateral goes, is to go into the roof fence. So, so there's some, some interesting stuff happening, but they're working with each property owner. And so far, we haven't, you know, initially we had some like, oh, what's going on? But we, I think we've kind of worked through those issues. And then we're also doing a flow study. So you'll start seeing some of the manholes are being painted green right now because we're putting flow monitoring equipment down into those manholes. The city has a really bad INI problem. So when it rains, we have a lot of rainwater that gets into our wastewater stream. And it causes sometimes up to 10 times our normal flows into our treatment plants. And it really skews our capacity. So we're trying to get a handle on that because we're really up against the wall on wastewater capacity to, you know, to some extent. So getting a better handle on our INI is going to be really helpful. And this is the project you guys had authorized us to move forward through. And hopefully working our fingers crossed it's reimbursable. But so that work is starting to happen as well. So there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on in manholes and, you know, street stuff right now.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions or concerns from council? Anyone from public? All right, we have two. Oh, I don't know if they're still great.
Yeah, my, oh, I'm sorry. This is Lisa. Yeah, I, I, again, this, on the, Mandy, on your report, there was this truck route study and design that I asked about earlier. Can someone elaborate on what that is about? Because it says work continues and funding, if proved, will move to the next level. So what is this about and where is it? Just a question. It's on Mandy's report, but it wasn't.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Yeah, so the truck route is the city's established truck route. So it's Greenwood to railroad to Hatchery. And the city's been working for a number of years now to look at ways to slow down traffic and to make it safer for pedestrians, equestrians and bicyclists. And so we've received quite a bit of funding to do designs and public outreach and all of the preliminary studies required for CEQA. And that process is fairly complete. And we actually did apply for construction funding. And that has been recommended to the CTC and it looks like the city will be receiving about $1.6 million to do improvements to the truck route that are specifically focused on creating a safer and slower route through the city. And this process has been going on for at least three to four years that we've been doing different aspects and outreach and design work.
What were some, what were some examples of those, like speed bump? Can you give me some examples of this infrastructure that you're talking about that the grants might fund?
We are looking at speed humps, chicanes, landscape bulb outs, increased widths of sidewalks, signage, LID features. Undergrounding utilities.
Utilities, so the holes won't be in the middle of the sidewalk. So when the kids walk side by side, they don't have to go out into the street.
Yeah.
Which I'm very excited about, that possibility. And HCOG, the technical advisory committee approved the funding. So it's being sent to the next level of review and approval. So it, you know, it looks like it might happen.
Yeah, I think it's really promising.
It is very promising.
Yeah, it'll be a big improvement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Lisa. And Elise, did you have your hand up still for this, the manager's report item?
Hello, yes, I did. I, I heard Mandy say something about there wasn't much to report. And so there were no reports about certain, certain projects or processes or something. And I just wanted to say that, you know, when a lot of these things that are ongoing, it seems, you know, it may not seem newsworthy to the people that are involved in it on a day-to-day basis. But it, it would probably be received differently by people that are not involved in that process. And so I think that there would be a lot of people interested in just, even if, you know, in just learning more about what's happening in that process and understanding what it is and how it works. And so even if it's just a few lines that are, you know, put into a progress report page on the website or something, you know, that says, well, this is what, you know, the design review or whatever you call it process is about and what it does. You know, so that, you know, it would make, I think it would make better use of the council's time and the, and the time at the meetings if people had an avenue to get questions answered without taking up your time. And, and people would come to the meetings more educated and more informed and and then we could possibly do more constructive things with council meeting minutes. You know, and, and also oftentimes, we don't know what the minutes were from the last meeting until a couple of days before this next meeting. So, you know, what happened two months ago or a month ago is not really known to somebody who wasn't able to attend that meeting. And I don't know if it's possible to publish those minutes any earlier so that people can review that and once again, be more prepared for a council meeting or better understand what's going to be discussed. But it is awfully hard to follow the process when it's parceled out the way it is and there's such long delays between meetings.
Well, at least we don't get the minutes until we get our packet either. So you're in the same boat we are pretty much, except that we are at the meeting. So we have that knowledge of what happened at the meeting. But and all of this information is on the website. As soon as it's made, made public, it's made available. But a lot of times our secretaries have not produced the minutes until close to the next meeting. That's just the way a lot of, a lot of people do minutes different ways, but I've seen people wait until the last minute. I personally, I used to do minutes, I used to like to do them right after a meeting because it was fresh in my mind. But some people do it a different way and go back and they're, they have our recordings or whatever. So we get them at the same time you do, basically.
Okay.
But thank you for your suggestion.
But couldn't the city, I mean, again, I agree with Elise. On this, Elise, I just think that the, the, the timing of it, minutes could be, if they could be directed to the staff to do them sooner because there is a lot that, you know, again, that the, the audience, that's the community, is not able to, yeah, I don't know, fully grasp or have some ideas and to be better informed about asking questions and things like that. So if the minutes could come out earlier or something like that with the staff. Because that's y'all's role is to, to direct the staff to, to do such. And so I would ask, anyway, I agree with Elise's point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your input. Okay, do we have any other reports? Like to question about? Okay, we'll move on to future agenda items. Now, you were talking about having a meeting on the second Tuesday in February, which would be February eighth. And then our fourth meeting, that month would be February twenty-second, which is actually in the middle of President's Week, which is when students are off work, that's off school. Some people get the week off. But anyway, that's February twenty-second. So for the future agenda items, what, what was on your radar?
Yeah, so I was thinking it might be helpful to consider having that second, the second Tuesday in February meeting as a placeholder if we need it. I don't know that we will, but it's possible that, that we'll have some progress on the design development agreement that we could get you as a draft to give you a lot. Because I think you need, you know, a little bit more time to, to be able to read through it. I mean, obviously you'll have, the attorneys will be able to provide an overview and everything. But just so you have a little more time to read through it, they're, they're larger legal documents. I don't know if we'll have it prepared in time, but I wanted to have that as a placeholder just in case. That way, it just, like I said, just gives you more time to, to digest it and think of questions that you have on. So we didn't really have a lot. We, we are moving forward. The housing element, that's going to be hitting the planning commission. So those, I don't think that, that that will really come into play with council. But we'll try and, my goal is to get you the housing element update for review by the second meeting.
So that's a regular meeting. That's the regular.
Yeah, so really it's just the design development agreement, giving you something sooner, you know, rather than having it crunched for you to make a decision. So that's kind of the thought process right now. And if we get to a point where, you know, the staff and the attorneys don't, you know, have something yet for you or it's getting too close, then we'll just go with the fourth meeting or the fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah. And you were talking about meeting earlier and I'm, I'm not in favor of that. I mean, with people working and that kind of thing.
Oh, no, not in earlier time. Yes, just the, the placeholder second Tuesday meeting. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Was there anyone that would like anything on the future agenda items that comes to mind?
It kind of crossed a lot of things off. We have some of our bigger things that we've been working on, the anti-discrimination and stuff. And we're still just kind of running up against all of this COVID stuff, you know, just, it's, we're just not having, trying to bring people together and participate in forums. They seem to just be kind of getting shattered constantly. So we haven't really picked up much traction on that. So that's kind of our outline items. But most of the other items, I think you guys have resolved for the most part.
I mean, HCOG is still meeting via Zoom completely. What is the humble bay is also the wastewater?
Yeah.
Or CEA is.
Is awesome. Okay. Well, actually, I think the people in HCOG like it because we have people from all the way in Rio del and Fortuna. And it was really hard for some of them to get to, all get to, especially when it was dark. And then our meetings are at four by the time the meeting's over, six, right? It was driving in the dark. Interesting. Okay.
Adeline, can I make a comment? Adeline?
Lynn, yeah.
Yeah. Since I'm here, I just wanted to mention that the community emergency response team usually reports to you. Present our annual report in February and we, we will have a report ready. So we would be interested in speaking to you with whatever meeting date you come up with.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So that's, that's cert?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that's for the February twenty-second. Okay. Thank you, Lynn. I look forward to hearing your report. And would the planning commission commissioners be at our meeting with the housing development?
Maybe. Uh, I think they would send you a recommendation, I believe, is the process. I think they, yeah, yeah, definitely Gary would be there. But yeah, he would write up the planning commissioner's recommendation. I believe that they could attend if, if you wanted to have it in that type of a format. I'm not really sure.
Yeah, no, that's right. No, that's a different thing when we have a meeting together.
Yeah.
Projects and that kind of thing. Okay, well, since we are at the end of our meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Motion by Chris Curran, seconded by Ben McCrease to adjourn this meeting. Is there any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Hi, Trevor.
Hi, thank you.